Order for Watertown City Council Meeting, sorry about that Bruce. Called the order for Watertown City Council Meeting for November eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise while former city councilman, former deputy mayor, and soon to be new state senator from District Five Glenn Vilhauer leads us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather tonight as grateful people. We are so blessed, the community that we live in, the beautiful rain that we so desperately needed, and the people that are in this room and work across the city. We are just so blessed and so fortunate, and we know that you have your hand in everything that we do, and we just pray that good things come to this community, to this state and this country. We ask a special blessing upon these council members that are meeting tonight. I ask that you give them guidance to make decisions that are pleasing to you, and all God's people said, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Rob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Poline.
Here.
Jurens.
Here.
Peters. Absent. Shuddy.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. With that, the chair will make, will accept a motion to approve the agenda, but we have a couple of different changes. We will be having a, in item eight, we are going to be doing a presentation by Terry Hoffman from the City Transit Authority, and along with the street facility presentation. And then also added last to the agenda is going to be a, an emotion to allow the finance officer to issue some special checks, and that will be explained further at that time. It's really just house cleaning, but I didn't feel quite right to add that to consent at this time. I just wanted to add that because that wasn't previously in the packet. So with those changes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Boy, that was weighed by Councilman Bueller and seconded by Councilman Danforth. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now on to open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. And I know that we have brief comments by our good friend of ours.
Thank you. I tell you, it's always we're sitting on this side versus sitting on that side I was used to. But I am here tonight as newly elected senator, and I still have a hard time.
Please announce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And who you are representing.
Rule number one, right? I'm Glenn Vilhauer. I am sitting here tonight as newly elected senator from District Five, and again, like I say, that's still hard for me to get those words out and believe that's actually happening. But I just want to touch base with this body. I know you got a busy agenda, so I'll keep it brief. I think by and large, we've had, the city has had a good relationship with our delegation peer over the years, and I hope that that continues. We've got some interesting changes coming in Cottington County or District Five. We got a complete new delegation. We've got three, three new members coming onboard, and we've lost some, some good leadership in the three that are not going to be going back to peer. I've got no, no big agenda. I've got no illusions that I'm going to shake the world up when I get out there. All I can do is, is promise that I will listen and work hard and try to do the best I can to represent the people of this district. So with that, I look forward to ongoing communications with apparently a new city manager at some point, the mayor and the council. So I look forward to those communications going forward, and thank you for your time here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, State Senator Vilhauer.
Elected.
Elected, State Senator-elect. It's a good seat, so. We'll go still on open forum. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. I'll close open forum, and we'll go straight to item eight, and I'm just going to use my prerogative and move Mr. Hoffman and City Transit up first on the agenda for tonight, so.
Thank you for having us. Terry Hoffman, co-executive director, Community Transit.
Get the microphone.
Oh, yep. Is the green light on?
On the microphone. How it is? I'm Terry Hoffman, co-executive director with Community Transit. Passing out some information for you guys is our newly hired assistant director, Jennifer Beam, who we stole from the Department of Transportation. Not sure how we did it, but she, we've been working with her for years on the transportation side, and she switched, switched sides, so we're happy to have her. What she's handed out is just, is a lot of information about public transit. I'm not sure how much all of you really know. The main thing I'm here to talk about tonight is ridership. I know you guys had some tough decisions with, with funding, and even though we are, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but we are not City Transit. We're Community Transit of Watertown, Sistin, but we all, I'm here just to talk about the Watertown part. We are not part of the city, but you guys have always supported us very well, and we appreciate that very much and hope that continues. So the thing I'm here to talk about is this, you know, the last couple of years, our ridership has taken off, but not, this year was like any other year. We had an increase of thirteen thousand rides for one year. That is pretty much unheard of as far as public transit in South Dakota. Most, the most, the biggest jump or biggest increase was in people using us to get to and from work, which is a big change. In the past, it's always been trips for education, getting kids to and from school, daycares, whatever, and medical rides. Now, we still do a great number of both of those, but the, the rides for employment have soared, and one month into our new fiscal year, that total continues to rise. We're about a thousand rides over last year's pace in that first month. So things are not slowing down for us any. Hopefully you see us all over the place. You definitely see us across the street over here with all the buses we have outside at night, which is not an ideal situation, but that's another story. We're still looking for another building. We've outgrown, severely outgrown ourselves, so. But anyway, that was, that's the message I wanted to get across was, was the ridership and how much it has increased, how much people, how much people of Watertown do rely on what we do. And the rest there is information for you guys going forward. And if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them.
Let's open it up for some questions. Council, Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just curious, Mr. Hoffman, so how did you handle this with this new influx? I did quick math, maybe I'm wrong, over forty a day. How do you, how did you handle that this year?
Well, magic, no. We brought in, we had to hire some more drivers, obviously. We have staff of thirty-one over here. Most of those are drivers. Most of our drivers are retired, they're older people, but they, they've looking, they don't like retirement, basically, so they come out and they, they drive for us. We had to, we did acquire some new vehicles. We're holding some of the older ones together until more new ones arrive. We're slated to get four new ones here in the middle of December, which we can't wait for that. It's been difficult. We had to be really innovative. Our schedulers, our dispatchers have come up with ways to make everything work, and it is, it has been a difficult thing to do.
Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hoffman, how are you, how are you doing for vehicles? Are you, do you have enough equipment to handle these?
We have, we have enough, yeah, we have enough currently, but some of what we have is so old and outdated that it's, I mean, it's killing us on the maintenance side, and that's why we are so looking forward to getting those four buses in December. Not too far behind that, we have probably what we call a narrow-body bus. They're more economical, they're a little bit harder to use for wheelchairs, but we have a couple of those coming as well. And as we get those, we're replacing the ones that are, that just outlived their life, their useful life. Basic lifespan of a bus is ten years, two hundred thousand miles. Right now, we've got four vehicles over there that are well over two hundred thousand.
Should we be concerned about the increase, this biggest increase in our rides for employment? I'm sure you're talking to those people as a city. Is that something that we should know about?
I would think you probably should. I mean, or at least be aware of it. It honestly, this last year has caught us off-guard. It just, you know, it just ballooned. I know people have just figured out that it's cheaper to ride public transit than to own an operator vehicle, and a lot of our, a lot of our ridership is low-income people or people with fixed incomes, you know, that they use, they use us for a reason, so.
So we had this demand two years ago. Why this year?
Like I say, I think they just discovered, you know, we've done more marketing. We get out, we talk to as many people as we can, we go to service clubs, wherever we can go, we go talk, anybody that'll listen to us, so. And quite honest, the word of mouth is the biggest, is our biggest marketing tool. It's.
Anything more, Councilman? Councilman Tupper.
Maybe this is a little unfair, because I'm their board president, and I have been for many years, been under board for, ever since Moby Dick was a minnow, I guess, as Bruce would say, but I've seen by leaps and bounds this, this organization grow. Terry, what's the daily, or what's, what does a ride cost?
Ride, a typical ride within the city here is three dollars. When you get outside, outside of here to the lake, and it's a five-dollar fare, you know, one-way. Anything beyond that, there's charges per mile. We do, we work with Medicaid a lot, that's one of our big, our biggest, that is our biggest source of income.
And then also, being that we cannot, according to federal and state laws, we cannot compete against the taxi service, so we have to, we can't take rides on demand. We have to, people have to call in the day ahead of time, set up rides.
Right, and that's always been a point of contention for a lot of people. We, to get a ride, you need to call one business day prior by three P.M. Because at three P.M., our, all our routing software kicks in, and we shut down, no more, no more rides accepted after that.
And then a lot of it's an eighty-twenty match with federal and state dollars, so anything that you raise as far as fees, anything that the city or county gives, or anything you go out, do a fundraiser, anything like that is considered part of that twenty percent?
Yes.
Yeah, and I know, I know the answer to this one, but I just want you to publicly say, we just started the new fiscal year, our budget for year twenty twenty-five has increased by how much?
Well, we asked for a little bit over three million dollars from the federal government. We did not get that. We are, we got one penny less than we got last year, is what we were awarded.
That's a little hard to.
It is.
Continue growing when you get a penny less than what you did last year, so.
But we will find ways to, you know, we need to get more contracts. We will find ways to make a.
What was our total budget we got appropriated?
I don't have it in front of me, but two-point-seven, I believe, roughly, two-seven, two-point-seven million.
That's both state and federal?
Yes.
Thank you. Is all I get.
Any further questions or comments? Well, on behalf of the city, I want to thank the Community Transit. But no, you do really good work. In fact, today I was talking to one of your drivers, just, I always see them picking up and dropping people off all over town, and they do a lot of work, so thank you. Councilman Tupper.
We do have a lot of great partnerships, and I just want to mention one partnership that we have, or maybe I'll let you do it, Terry, with Prairie Lakes Healthcare Systems.
Okay, I don't know if you're bringing that up because you know, but today we, we did finalize the new contract. Was a little worried about that. We hadn't had a rate increase in eight years since we started working with them, and we asked for that, and we got it, no questions asked, so. And they, what it is, is Prairie Lakes, we provide the rides to anyone, any, any medical facility of any kind in the city, Prairie Lakes pays the bill, which, and we do roughly twelve, about twelve-hundred rides a month, medical, and they pay that bill. So, and it has made for a healthier community, because people that were not necessarily getting to their appointments or definitely not doing follow-ups because they couldn't afford to get there, or had no way to get there, now have that opportunity, so. That is a huge, a big contract for everybody.
I wanted to bring that up, but just goes to show the community, how great a community we live in, and we have partnerships like that with, with organizations in the community. When Terry says that, when he says medical trips, that doesn't make any difference if it's to the clinic, or if it's the eye doctor, or the dentist, or if you're going to the chiropractor, they, they pay for those rides without any, without any questions. So just been a great partnership with them for the last eight years, and hopefully we can continue on with it, so thank them very much.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much, too.
Now, I'll move on to a presentation on the street facility from our assistant city manager, Heath Von I.
I'll invite Street Superintendent Bana and City Engineer Peterson up here as well, as we walk through some, some detailed information for the group here this evening, and hopefully it helps to paint a picture on where we're at with the street facility, how we've gotten where we are. Some of this information, we've seen a few different times, it's been presented to the council as we've gone through the scoping, the design phases, so I'll try to be as abbreviated as I can through those components. And then through the presentation, please do interject as a council, and we can help answer any questions that come up along the way. That would be completely appropriate from our perspective. So this, this presentation, of course, stems from our capital improvement plan meeting that we had here a week ago with the council. One of the major projects that are, been in the works for a while now, of course, is the street maintenance facility. And in that capital improvement plan project, meeting that we had, there was a tentative funding scenario that we laid out for the council that could help get this project across the finish line. So with that, of course, came some discussion about giving an update to the council on where the project's at from a design standpoint or a layout standpoint. Most of what I've got in this slideshow is pretty high-level site plan type of information on how the site is laid out, and some of the buildings that would be included in the final plans that would be taken out for bid. And then we've also got in our files that I can dig into after the presentation, some more detailed plans if the council wants to look at those at all tonight. I can certainly pull those up for reference as well. If it's better for a meeting outside of this one, we can do that, too. But we've got the high-level stuff in the PowerPoint, and then the more detailed stuff that we can pull up as needed, so. This was just some of the old information about the current site. The main thing here I wanted to remind the council of is, this, of course, is a valuable piece of property that we would want to liquidate that asset as soon as we can get moved out of here, which would bring value to the project. I believe the recent appraisal from about a year ago now was about three-quarters of a million dollars of value in this existing site. These are the multitude of buildings that Rob and his street crew work out of. The, one point I was going to make here, they currently only have just over seven thousand square foot of heated storage. The initial project scope was to push for and strive for about forty thousand square foot of heated storage to truly meet all the needs of the street division. That's to put all the, the truck plows, the motor graders, the sander trucks, all that winter equipment inside during the winter months so that it's warm and ready to go every, every morning through the winter for any snow event that happens to arise. This forty thousand square foot, as you'll see later in the presentation, we started a lot larger than that. I think we were pushing fifty on some of the earlier renditions of the new facility layout. However, we ended up whittling that back down and only hit the mark of about thirty-four thousand square foot. 34,000 square foot on where the final design is. And that was in part due to cost-saving measures and trying to just get this project across the finish line, but still be effective. And that 34,000 that we're currently designed at is essentially what it would take, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's to get every piece of winter equipment into the heated storage at a, I don't, I don't want to call it bare bones, but at a bare bones minimum of what we would need. So that's where the design is sitting at right now. There, there's not a lot of room for future expansion in the existing space as it's designed is what I'm getting at there. There is ability to add on to the design for future expansion, but it's not included in the project as proposed right now. But other tidbits of information about the current facility, you know, it's, it's very aged. I believe hand-me-down from a state operations from several decades ago. And the crew's done a great job working out of here as they've needed to for as long as they have. So the timeline, it actually extends back all the way to 2015. And that's when Rob had been working with the mayor at the time, the finance officer, about setting dollars aside for a new street facility. And it was identified in a long-range CIP to hopefully have some activity for construction by 2020 or 2021. The, the dollars that were set aside in that timeframe, unfortunately for Rob, but fortunately for the airport, they were, they were borrowed to go into the efforts of the new airport terminal. So at one time, we had $5 million set aside in a, not a formal, hard, restricted reserve, but in a, you know, bucket of money that we're planning for a street facility with. And that 5 million ended up going to the airport terminal project. Some of the crew out there still joke with Rob about him needing a plaque out there for his donation for the airport terminal. I don't think they put that up yet, though, have they? He definitely deserves one, though, because that's, that's great team, teamwork there to be able to make that airport project happen, which was a necessity at the time. When you get the federal money to complete an airport terminal project like we did, we had to find the cash on hand to do it. And unfortunately, that's where it had to come, come from. So since then, we moved on. April of '21, we started looking a little more seriously at the design and budgeting for a new street facility. At that time, this was right, these numbers were put together right pre-COVID impact numbers. And as you all know, any major structure we've seen happen since COVID, since post-COVID impact on pricing, all these numbers have virtually doubled. Take the ice arena, we were estimating at 15 million before COVID, and it came in over 30. I know there's a handful of other examples similar to that. Well, this one, no different, seven and a half pre-COVID, we're sitting at right about 15 now, post-COVID. So then in April of '21, based on this seven and a half number, the city issued a $15 million bond, which was an apartment for the street facility at seven and a half, City Hall at five, and then 10th Avenue North, that was the full reconstruct that we did on 10th Avenue. All three of those projects were combined into this bond issuance back in April of '21. So we were geared up. We had the money in place. Now, we were looking forward to moving forward with the design. That brought us to later in 2021, where we put an RFP out for Design Services. In October of '21, we were under a pre-design or a, what I would call a scoping or a siting contract with JLG Architects. And we proceeded with them to analyze several locations throughout town on where to land a street facility and what made good sense operationally to serve the community. And of course, as you know, we landed on the old Sail Barn property there along Highway 20. If this were a zoomed out map, you could see that it's actually almost the geographic center of the city when you consider going all the way west on the west side of Lake Compesca, which Rob's crews, of course, provide maintenance to all the way out there. And then all the way east over into the Pheasant Ridge Industrial Park and those areas east of I-29. So it became a very natural location to want to house a street maintenance facility, direct access on Highway 20, a lot of benefits in that location compared to others. So that led to the procurement of that property at that time, to the tune of $1.2 million for the 27 acres. We then modified our contract with JLG to go into a full design contract. And April to August, they had a schematic design done for the street facility. And after that schematic, or through that schematic, they started meeting with staff, reviewing the space needs and truly understanding how the street division functions and what would all make sense from a layout, a space needs, office space, heated storage, repair bays, the sign signal technician shop space, all the things that you'll see in the plans that we walked through extensively with. And when I say staff, you know, it wasn't just the three of us in those meetings. This was the whole entire street crew, all 15 staff out there, the boots on the ground, the folks that know those operations very well. They've got great ideas on what would help make them more efficient in areas they've been struggling with in the years past. So that was all poured into the design with JLG's process and how they went through that design work. Then July of '22, we had a little hiccup on one of our other capital projects where City Hall bid came in much higher than we expected. So that made us push pause on the City Hall, the Wells Fargo Bank remodel project. After that bid was rejected, we then had direction from the council to start exploring other alternatives for City Hall. One of which, of course, was a city services building where we would have City Hall combined with this new street facility, get some economy of scale in, in the construction by adding on, you know, a few extra square foot for City Hall services on top of the already planned to be built, street admin and other functions that this building on Highway 20 would provide. So that went through a few high-level renditions with JLG, a little bit of cost estimating. That was pushing 30 million for that total combined facility. That presentation went, was gone through with the council at that time and to the general public. And it was decided not to proceed with that option. And so from April '23 to February of '24, JLG was directed to go back to simply designing the street facility. So as you can see, we've got a pretty lengthy time. We've been working with JLG through these design renditions and like, and how we've gotten where we've landed here today, as of earlier this year. The bottom of this slide, I think, is an important one. Total invested to date on this project to get a street facility has been just shy of $3 million. The total cost of the land being at 1.2. We've already completed the 10th Avenue improvements that would be on the north side of the, the city's portion of the 27 acres we bought from the Sail Barn property. That was at just over half a million dollars. JLG, the design work, the scoping, the surveying, the construction, the design development plans, and then the construction plans came in at just right around a million dollars in services to them. RJM, our construction manager at risk that we engaged with during the design process, we paid them about 50 grand in pre-construction or design phase services for their input along the way through the design. And then we had to install a water main that we paid our partners over there at WMU for that work to the tune of over 100,000. And that's miscellaneous, all to the tune of just about 3 million bucks that we've got invested this far. So through the design process, using the CMAR and coming to the close of design, the cost estimate was pushing upper 20s to low 30s, all in with all buildings. And so we quickly started to realize, all right, we're not going to get all this done based on the budgetary constraints. So we started going through some of the things that, that we could, from a staff standpoint, wanting to optimize this facility to meet today's needs, meet as many of our future needs as we can, if possible, of course, as you'd want to do with any kind of project like this when you're investing this kind of money. But also realizing we are going to be capped. So to be able to build this for the next 30 years, expansion of the street equipment, this wasn't feasible, wasn't practical with the budgetary constraints. So one of those things I talked about earlier was reduce the heated storage space. We were pushing 46,000. We dropped it down to about 34,000. That saved us roughly a few million, a few million dollars off of some of the preliminary estimates. We removed the cold storage building. And on the next slide, I'll have, I'll reference some of this as I go through this list. But we had a cold storage building slated in here, too. The difference there is just, you know, like a pole barn, maybe it's got a concrete floor, maybe it's even a gravel floor. It's just somewhere to put some of the equipment in that's not heated, but yet it gets it out of the weather. So in the winter months, you know, your street brooms can go into the cold storage. They don't have to be taking up heated storage indoor space. But yet it, it gets them in and out of the weather and helps with the longevity of these pieces of equipment. But we removed that entirely from these final plans. It was about a $16,000 square foot structure. This is kind of a rough rendition of the site plan on where it would have landed. But that was, you know, just shy of a $4 million savings to cut that out of the project. We removed the brine building. The brine building was going to go next to the salt sand shed. And it's a smaller building, but it's heated because it's got, you know, water in there, the brine solution. That's important in the, the winter application to, to the roads. Instead of locating it separately out here, what we'll likely do is kind of makeshift, shoehorn it into a corner of the heated storage building instead, which is fine. It'll work. It just won't be as convenient as having it right next to the salt sand shed. But Rob will certainly be able to make that work, and it'll just take up a little bit of space in the heated storage building. But that was able to be unplugged from the equation and saved another million bucks off the top of the project costs. Fuel station, we've talked about in the past, the scale, you know, $400,000 or so between those two items. Both that we think would be beneficial to have, but they're kind of low hanging fruit on pushing pause for a while until they can be plugged back in. Phasing was considered as a cost-saving measure. And the, the final construction plans that JLG completed actually have the sign and signal bay. Here, let me show you on this slide. This whole west wing is in the final plans as a bid alternate, which is related to phasing. We don't recommend phasing, like going into this saying, well, let's just bid the heated storage, and then we'll just wait for this later on. Reason being is the, the estimating that came back to phase it was going to easily tack on another $2 million of cost rather than doing it all upfront. So we felt for $2 million savings to phase it in multiple years, it, it made sense just to get it all done in one fell swoop. However, we can include it as a bid alternate so that when the bids do come in, if, if the pricing is just, you know, astronomical for some reason, we've got an easy way to unplug that from the bid as a bid alternate and just stick with the heated storage and office space. So that's the phasing discussion that we had with, with the consultants. The traditional bid versus CMAR, you know, as I mentioned, we've been working with RJM. They've been great help. They were a great contractor for us on the ice arena, did a real good job. But we also started to wonder what it would look like to just take this out for a conventional bid. And we did a little bit of quick and dirty estimating with some local contractors about what that might look like. And we, we believe there'd be a pretty good savings with the competition of taking this out to a traditional bid. And that's where our, our recommendation would lend towards, lean towards today, is that we wouldn't continue into a construction contract necessarily with, with JLG, or excuse me, with RJM, but rather take it out for a traditional bid and get some, hopefully get some more competitive pricing for the construction phase. Then the last point on here on cost reductions, also not just cost reductions, but citywide efficiencies. This facility as designed, of course, with those repair bays, which are on the westerly wing here, those tie directly into the, the need for and the plan for eventually having a full central fleet maintenance program for the city. Right now, we just simply don't have that. But the, the economy of scale to bring that to the citywide fleet, you know, we don't doubt over time, I don't have good numbers to throw at you tonight, but over time, that program itself is going to bring a lot of efficiencies to the operations of the city. I just don't have a dollar amount for you. Point being, there's a lot more to this than just storing winter equipment inside. That centralized fleet in these repair bays is going to have a huge impact for the positive of the city's fleet. This wash bay, I don't have any good numbers for you on that, but that, too, is not just meant for street operations. You know, emergency service vehicles can come through this wash bay, the fire trucks, the ambulance, the police cars, they can all use this wash bay. All the city hall vehicles that we use would be able to utilize this. So it wouldn't be a standalone for street use only. This is a citywide facility in a lot of respects when it comes to central fleet and having a wash bay available for everybody. The same would be true for fueling island, of course. If we were to get to that point in the future, to have a fueling island, that would be for the entire citywide fleet. And we would have a lot of economy of, of gains there from a fuel standpoint. So this slide shows some of those reductions that were made. And again, this is a rough rendition. None of this is to scale. It's just kind of showing, we Xed out the coal storage, we got rid of the brine room, the fuel island, the scale. We whittled back some of the storage, heated storage space, and a little bit of the office space as well. This is the final plan view layout of what the, the street facility would look like. And I will, let's see if I got a good site plan. So, you know, here's Highway 20 on the east side of the slide. And as you pull into the site, you have the office on the southeast corner, then you'd have the heated storage, and then you get over into the sign signal shop, the repair bays, and the wash bay. But I'll look at those just a little closer here with you and zoom in a little bit. So the office space, I think we ended up 53, 5400 square feet. So nothing astronomical, just enough to get by with a couple of offices, a couple of meeting rooms. Some of the big things, though, for the crew are the, the locker rooms, the restrooms, and a break room for the street crew. Between break room, meeting rooms, and all these things, this was really the most, I think, one of the most efficient layouts that we received throughout all the iterations. This office space looked 101 different ways, and it can look 101 different ways. But I think they really ended up landing on a great layout that worked really well. This was through a lot of coordination with Rob and his staff on what their needs are from street operations. And I think one of the questions earlier on is, well, can we just not do this and put it into the big box of this building over here? That is an option, and it does save this money. But then, as you can see, of course, we just knock over 5,000 square foot out of this heated storage area, which then compromises the ability to have enough room to store what we need to inside the big box heated area. Panning to the west here, the sign signal shop. So Tracy Isens is our sign signal technician. And he's got a street operator that helps him out as needed for street striping, all of her signage, all of her traffic signal maintenance. Well, as you can imagine, with all that kind of work throughout town, there's a myriad of equipment and supplies that come with that. And he spends a good amount of time in the shop, troubleshooting traffic signal cabinets, some of the components and the traffic signals are, you know, the technology and the electronics that go in them. He's got a, a testing station and a workbench that he cranks a lot of that work out. So it's nice for him to have his own space as a sign signal technician, and that's what that is designed to do. Then otherwise, you got your conventional parts room space, and then you get over into the repair bays. So there's two drive-through bays, or four stalls, you can think of it as, depending on what's being worked on. This was designed so This was designed so you could have a full tractor trailer combination pull in here to be worked on at one time if needed. There would be an appropriate truck rated lift. And then otherwise, the use of portable lifts for the, any trucks or vehicles that needed to be worked on by our, our current mechanic staff that we have or our future fleet maintenance manager and their mechanics is that department would grow for, for the city's services across the board through all the city fleet. Then there's some, a little bit of office space for those staff as well. And, and then you've otherwise got some mechanical room in here and they all tie into the use and functionality of that wash bay. So, you can see it's pretty, pretty straightforward, bare bones, kind of minimum space needed for the operations. This just kind of reiterates what I walked through by a square footage standpoint, just about fifty-five hundred square foot of office, thirty-four thousand heated storage. The maintenance area is just shy of fourteen thousand square feet and it's broken out into those areas I just walked through, sign signal, repair bays and wash bay. There's a mezzanine above the parts area that'd be used to store paint and other, you know, spare tires and other things like that. Anytime you see a facility like this, any gain in storage space you can get, it's worth doing because no matter how you build these things, you always run out of storage and I think Rob would attest to that based on all the touring that we did of other facilities. So, what's next from here after getting the, the design complete, we got a construction plan set of drawings ready to be bid. Yeah, back in February, those plans were complete. In April, we did a tour with a couple of the council members to other similar facilities. Minnehaha County just completed building one here a couple of years ago and opened it up for operations. City of Brookings, theirs is a few years older than that and a little bit more modified of existing structures, but we also toured theirs just to see, you know, how that compares to what we are proposing to put into this one. We found it very comparable in functionality and space needs and what we were putting into this. It helped solidify this design that JLG worked through, who were also on some of these tours in the past, so they could get a good handle on what we were looking for and how it compares to other related facilities. So, if we wanted to complete the project, if that is the will of the council, then these, these would be the next five straightforward steps. Formally setting the budget, that's at approximate fifteen million that we talked about back in June at our June council meeting. How do we get to that fifteen million? I got a, the next slide walks through it in more detail, but it would include the issuance of a bond. We would bid the project sometime mid, late winter, January, February. Hopefully having a contract awarded by March or April, construction could commence as soon as April or May in the spring of twenty-five. Here are the details of what, how we would, the roadmap to make up that fifteen million. This has been vetted and thought about and it really is a pretty simple list, but this is what all bubbled to the top over the last few months since we brought that fifteen million dollar estimate and budget back to the council back in June. So, as we were getting into the budget phase, working with the CFO and the city manager, these were the numbers that, that came out of those discussions. We have a current project reserve fund, that bond that I mentioned to you earlier, there's about five million left in that. You might ask, well, why not the full seven and a half that we had earmarked? Well, that's simply due to overruns on the city hall project and I believe that's probably the main reason why. But there's about five million left in there.
And we've expended those dollars towards the project.
Ah, true.
Almost three million.
Gotcha, yep. And then the next item on there, utilization of the existing cash in the two-twelve capital improvement fund.
I think we have a question here, sorry.
Yeah. We talked about the, we talked about the two-point-nine-five million already invested in this. Is that number part of the fifteen or is the fifteen construction cost?
Fifteen would be to construct here forward, so that's what's left to be spent.
So, dust settles, if everything worked out, we'd be at about eighteen for the project.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Some of that.
Could I, I'm gonna put a caveat to that. It's eighteen, but we know we bought extra land that through the sale would come back into that, so that, that's for the twenty-eight acres plus actually fours, which is really thirty-two, wasn't it?
Exactly, yeah.
So, that money can't all get sunk into this project, so.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yep, thank you, you were, you were reading my mind, that's where I was going. The utilization of that two-twelve cash, that's that four-point-seven that we talked about in last week's capital meeting. Just a point I'll make on that, the capital cash on hand is, is just that, that's in the two-twelve fund, it's sitting there, it's, it's not reserved or locked down for anything. And it's different than the general fund reserves. The general fund reserves are a whole separate bucket of money that Kristen, of course, helps manage and has that threshold of minimum amount that we want to hold back for three months operating and all the wizardry that goes into the number that keeps Kristen happy as the CFO that we need to have in place. This keeps that general fund reserve whole to its current value of, I think, around nine million. The third item on there, sale of excess land. There's still more to be sold, but this five hundred thousand that we're representing is what we recently went under contract with for, to purchase a portion of that area. Sale of the current site, as I just mentioned earlier, about three-quarters of a million dollars. We, of course, have an interested party that I don't think we'd have any problem getting that red, getting rid of that land, too. Ice arena bond, there is remaining cash available from that, from those bond proceeds to the tune of about one million dollars that Kristen and Justin have talked about in coordination with the dollars spent on the ice arena versus what's left in that bond. The general fund, this, now this is the general fund reserve, that nine million, you know, if, if there's a need for a few grand or a hundred or a half million or something to come out of there, you get much more than a half million or pushing a million, Kristen might start cringing at us a little bit, but there is some availability for some dollars there to a reasonable extent. And definitely do not want to compromise that, I want to emphasize that.
City manager Mick.
We'll likely get into this a little further when we have the discussion, but again, part of the recommendation for issuing the bond rather than taking it from the general fund, I've had some questions about, you know, having a savings account, right, for project overruns or things that come up throughout the year. If we take the three million out of the general fund and we take the four-point-seven out of the two-twelve fund, you do not have any room for error or anything else that may come up throughout the year, which is why we believe that the bond would be advantageous because it leaves your general fund reserve whole for, you know, a project came in over bid, but we have deemed it necessary to do that.
Flood.
A flood, you know, it, it gives you roughly three million dollars, maybe a little bit more of liquidity, if you will, to be able to operate throughout the year. If you were to deplete them both, that could lead to some real challenges if things go
And then that, that, of course, would tie in perfectly with that last point, that the remaining three million, all these together would tally up to fifteen, the remaining three million, we would recommend to come from a bond, not from that general fund reserve for the reasons that city manager just cited.
This, councilman Tupper.
So, I know we pencil in that seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for sale of current site. How are you going to bridge that gap in the meantime? I mean, basically, we're not going to sell it until we go to the new place. So, how do you bridge that three-quarters of a million dollar gap?
City manager Mick or?
Well, I would just comment on the, the conversations that I've had in the past with our, our partners at the, at the school district. I think there's a way to structure any agreement to figure those pieces of it out and our CFO may have some additional information as well.
So, I would just add, kind of the gap is the fact that we would have cash flow up until then, the project isn't, you know, you don't pay fifteen million upfront, so we would kind of stagger that in terms of the bonding would come first, you know, and I'd hold back until the sale would come in for that cash.
Thank you.
This spreadsheet.
Councilman Beeler.
Oh, sorry.
No, just while I'm thinking about it, the CIP cash that we're talking about, I'm curious as to how long it would take for us to rebuild that to, you know, potentially that level again if we use that funding.
I'll pull up the presentation we did last week if you want to move on to the other questions.
Yeah, we'll get some more information and get back to it. Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, I don't know who this is for, but, you know, we have our enterprise funds, do they have their own reserves?
Okay, if I.
I'll look at you.
Okay, yes, yes, the enterprise do, so similar to the, what we do with the special revenue government funds, they do set aside money for their capital projects as well. So, that's built into the fees and kind of the planning.
So, if there's a hiccup on their side within the, the, their enterprise funds, there's a good chance that that's covered via their reserves.
Yes, yeah, I think only in the past, I can remember maybe, it's been a while ago, we did a very short term just to help with the cash flow, two-twelve did, but it was paid back.
So, they kind of, for the most part, come out of the equation of the future.
City manager Mick.
Yes, so, when I look at the, what we presented last week, the, the totals of capital expenditures, it would take us, now this is, again, if we only meet our revenue projections, if we do not exceed them and if there are not savings through other projects and such throughout the year, it would take us until about twenty-thirty-one, twenty-thirty-two to build that up to the four-point-seven million.
Thanks, thank you.
This, this spreadsheet kind of walks through the details of that fifteen million. So, the actual hard construction costs really total about thirteen, but then you got some of those soft costs that we call them added in. The FFNE, the construction admin to the architect to monitor the progress and process the pay apps and make sure that the structure is getting built according to the plans and specs. And then we also include this, the sand salt building in that total that is pushing up there to fifteen. Yeah, so besides the building, this fourteen-point-eight million rounded to fifteen includes the site grading, concrete aprons around the building, some parking, asphalt parking areas, storm sewer fencing and all the other site improvements that would be necessary. These are some exterior renditions here on the last few slides as we wrap up the formal information we've got. This is from the southeast side of the site looking to the northwest. Of course, you got the admin offices up front. This is the east elevation, so if you were on Highway twenty looking straight west at the building, this is what you would see. Again, this lower level is, are the admin offices and then you got all the heated storage that you'd see here. This is from the south side looking north and we've got, see if I remember these right, so there's two doors going into the heated storage area. The next door west of there would be the sign signal shop area and then the two repair bay doors and then the wash bay to the far west. So, again, you can see that the building footprint for the large part of the building is pretty straightforward. If, if we were through the bid alternate process, bid this in two phases because the bids did not come in favorable, JLG designed this so that you could draw a hard line in the structure and just complete, you know, from here east and do the heated storage and then you'd pick up this westerly one in a later phase, at a later date in time. But that was designed accordingly so that it could be done that way. But simple roof lines, simple designs from that perspective to try to keep this as efficient as possible. And that pretty well wraps up the, the PowerPoint stuff. If I could pass it on to Rob, any closing comments he might have on the project in general?
Councilman Shuddy has something.
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question, if we were, let's just say that you mentioned where they could have a hard break and, and do a phase two, how does the sign shop function without having that, if that weren't, weren't to be, weren't to be built, like built, I guess, what would be the?
Kind of like the, the brine building that went away, that's going to take up a little corner in the heated storage area, that they'd have to do the same thing with the sign signal, he'd just have to take up a corner of the heated storage area with a makeshift work bench and space like that if that were to come to fruition.
And we don't currently have a wash bay, right? So, is that something that I guess we're already without? But the repair area, same thing, you'd have to utilize a little bit of the heated shop for that, I suppose?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Beeler has a few questions.
Thank you, just a couple of things. The cold storage portion, we said that we're not going to do that. What do we intend to do with that equipment? Is that going to sit outside then if we eliminated that portion of the project?
Rob, do you want to touch on how the heated storage meets or doesn't meet the exact needs for a hundred percent of the pieces of equipment and how the cold storage would tie into that by not having it?
Sure, so right now, our, with our plan is to be able to get all of our winter equipment in and get some of the other equipment, like the pickups in that we use every day, that we'd be packing stuff in, would be, it'd be, there is some stuff that we can put outside in cold storage, you know, we're not going to put things in like trailers and stuff like that, but we would be packing stuff in, in, in the heated storage area if we don't have the cold storage. I believe we can, we can do all right with that, though. We've talked about different ways to organize our space. And if you guys have seen our current shop setup, you'd, you see we, it's like Tetris, we fit stuff in.
My next question, I guess, you know, we, every time we work on a project, every capital project like this, we always look at the possibility for expansion, you know, and I don't know how this has been laid out for that, but I look at the repair bays, if that were necessary to expand that and, and kind of the layout, maybe you def, maybe you could shuffle that around potentially. I'm not the architect, but, but I'm just, this is just some of the thoughts. Most everything we've done, we've, we've made it so that we knew how we could expand so that the facility, the land, the way it was set up would work nicely with those type of expansions. And then, of course, the heated part, portion of the building as well.
Yeah, to those points, councilman, the heated storage is, the game plan there is you would expand to the north. There's enough room between the north edge of this proposed building footprint up to Tenth Avenue to where this could be extended. So, that, that was accounted for through the design. And then similarly with the repair bays, it's a little less ideal because you're creating this little alcove with, within the building, but that, too, you know, one, one could extend a standoff from the repair bays if that were desired in the future as well.
Would it not make sense to be able to move that further to the west and have something that you could change out, that easily could be changed out to accommodate a repair bay a little bit to the west, just a thought, so that you could add a third section for that, just something you may want to consider. Then also, just a couple of other things, the, the sign signal space, I'm sure there's a good reason that, and maybe you could fill us in on why it needs to be at this facility.
So, the sign signal technician is a direct report to the street superintendent. Communities are different on where that's housed, sometimes it's under the engineering division, sometimes it's under street maintenance. And here, it's, I think it fits best under street maintenance, so that space, having it on the same site as the rest of the street operations is important. This staffer does a multifunctional role for the city, so in the winter months, he's one of our lead motor grader operators, for example, running snow plow through the winter months, he's, he's really part of the street maintenance team. He's, he's really part of the street maintenance team. So that's why it makes perfect sense to keep it housed and plugged in here.
Okay, office as well, we would be able to expand if necessary, easily on the office. We go to the north then, is that what we do?
Yeah, I believe.
I'm assuming. But I mean, just so, just so it's laid out and they know, and I'm sure, like anything else, we know how we do that, how it would fit in with what's currently existing for, for the facility. And I, I know we're looking at maybe phasing in a scale, we're not going to use a scale. I'm just curious, when we weigh sand, salt, would that happen at the county then? Are we still going to get sand from the county, Rob?
Yeah, we'd still work with the county if, even without a scale. We currently, we keep track of our loads through just bucket loads, staff councils, so.
You know, that never made sense to me, anyway. You know, you could say, okay, that dump truck typically weighs this much. That's what we're going to charge for that sand. I, I mean, that.
It's, it's not an extremely accurate way of keeping track, but.
Right.
It works.
Okay, that's, for now, that's, I may have some other questions further on, but I'll get ahold of you, thanks.
You can keep going. Councilman Danforth?
We just get this sent to us as a council so we can look at it and ponder?
Absolutely.
Put our notes down? Discern? I guess that's better.
City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. One, one thing that as, as staff, we do need from you all is direction on next steps. If there is agreement from a majority of you that you want to move forward with this project, the logical next step would be to figure out or formalize the funding mechanism, meaning we would bring a bond resolution in front of you all. Doesn't mean you have to vote yes for that. But before I bring that forward, I'd like some confirmation that's what you want us to be doing with this particular project, if we are going to meet the timeline to have this under construction in 2025.
And City Manager Mac, I think that is appropriate that you ask for that. I know last week we had the conversation about council priority projects and we listed off, I think probably three dozen ideas. Street facility was obviously one of those that received a lot of interest, has for quite some time. I believe council can contradict me if I'm wrong, but I think all of council would at least like to know what the funding mechanism would look like going forward. We're still waiting on all of the responses on the council priority projects. We were asked to all prioritize them one to five, but I feel safe enough to know that this would probably receive pretty high priority from the council to move forward. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for bringing that up because that's where I was coming from. When is that planned discussion? Because that'll be a public meeting.
Yep.
When is that, this week, isn't it?
We haven't said it yet, but we will.
Oh. Ms. Mac, I, from my perspective, I would want to go through that process with this being a part of that to look at the complete picture.
We could do that at the December work session and then any action out of that could come at the next, at the second meeting in December.
Would that fit with your timeline that you were curious?
I, I think so, I mean, we just, if a bond is issued, we have to wait the 20 days for referral before we could do anything with that, which would put you into, into mid-January, again, which is fine. Then we'd have to give the go-ahead to the architects and the team to finalize the bidding documents and then put that, I think that is fine if we do it in late December.
Yeah.
To hopefully break ground in the spring.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to that point, I, I realize this project has a lot to do with balancing it with everything else going on. And we've got the special projects list that we need to get prioritized yet as a, as a council. The one thing I would just advise for whatever it's worth, and just take this for whatever it's worth, Rob would love to see this hole in the ground a year ago or longer ago, believe me, but we also understand that it's up against other needs in the city. And it's completely up to the council to prioritize this thing, to get it across the finish line. And the main thing I wanted to point out was this 15 million, even if we push this into 26 breaking ground, that could turn into 17.5 pretty easy. And just like all these projects, City Hall, the ice arena, the longer this waits, the more it will cost to the tune of a million plus as, as the years and months tick by. So if, if this financial roadmap looks amicable to the council and we decide that after the December council work session, I, this will get it done. This will get it across the finish line in the most seamless, cost-effective manner. But if it's simply not, we realize that too. The price of waiting, that'll yet to be determined. But if it goes up to 17.5 or 18 in the next year, two or three, then of course, where do those revenues come from? Where do those, where does that funding come from? All becomes part of the discussion and could prolong the project all the more. So I just wanted to advise the costing of this thing obviously will change as the months go by.
Councilman Danforth?
My understanding is we have to have an approved capital plan in place by the end of the year, is that correct? Is that right? If I can ask a question before I comment here. Approximately when in December would we have a work session?
It'd be the second Monday of the month, so the ninth.
Is there any way to accelerate this process and have these discussions? I'm not sure this is a one-hour meeting or a 10-hour meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we sure can, we could do it the afternoon of the second if you wanted, before that council meeting, we could do it sometime during that, that week. Next week's Thanksgiving, and I know there are many, many people out, so I just don't know that next week is going to work.
These are very important issues for us to discuss and to prioritize and to understand. And the last thing I want to see happen is us get backed into a corner and not take the time that we need to, to do a good job and an appropriate job for the CIP planning. So in my mind, the sooner the better, the more aggressive we are at scheduling, the better. Take, commit my time to that unless I'm deer hunting. But I, I just, I don't want to be backed into a corner when we have a tendency to do that. And so the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Right here, Mayor.
Councilman Jerrance?
I'm kind of feeling the, a little bit of the same way. We're like almost getting into a little bit of a hurry. And, I mean, before I get into this wonderful piece of paper, I'm a simple kind of guy. And Kristin's graph where she has talked about where the city likes to be, percentage of debt to revenue, I'd like to see this project put in there maybe at a $10 million range, maybe at a $15 range, just to simplify, maybe that's out there, maybe we've seen that. And, and then just some other ways, like you had talked about, what are ways Bruce has asked them, others have asked them, you've actually brought them up. Other ways to get, yeah, we've gone from 27 million, I believe is what I remember, to 22 to 17 to 15. What are ways, like the office? We're going, I'm not sure where we're at for an office square footage right now. I, I don't remember on there, but, you know, we're going to a 5,000-square-foot office locker room. How much does that save? I mean, is that even a big savings to even talk about, think about? And how could we get to 10 million? There's, those are things that citizens have come to me with, they've come to all of us with, which is why we're apprehensive and we don't want to jump too quickly right now.
City Manager Mac?
Councilman Jerrance, so are you wanting us to show what 10 or 15 million dollars of debt does?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
But we're not saying that we need to take 10 or 15 million dollars of debt out for this project.
So how much?
3 million.
Three total?
Three, 3 million total, yeah. And so there was a, so the one that you have in front of you.
Yes.
Actually, let me see it, sorry.
That's the one that shows the.
Yep, so this one is the current.
With the ice arena revenue in it?
And then we had a slide last week that showed the 3 million, and I'll send it out to everyone. So what the 3 million does, just for simple conversation.
Okay.
Under the current debt structure, in 2029, our debt, our percentage of debt to revenue drops to 41% in 2029. If we add a $3 million bond for this project, in 2031, our debt drops to 39%. So it's, it's relatively negligible what it does to our percentage debt to revenue. So we're saying that the total project is 15 million. What we're short to accomplish at 15 million is $3 million. So we've got 12 through all of these.
So may I follow up?
Yes.
So on the list of other priorities that we just discussed in the last week, does that eliminate the possibility of a lot of those? Or does that push them back?
It would, well, it's, it's twofold. Yes, it would change the timing of those. And I would say that the timing of those hasn't ever really been determined by this body. It would take the 4.7 in excess in the CIP fund and use it. But, yeah, so that's what it would do, it would do to those. But the 5 million in reserve, the sale of the land, the sale of the current site, and the ice arena bond are all tied to the street facility because the ice bond was written to be able to be used for this. So I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Any follow-up, Councilman? Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to say this. I spent several hours on this prioritization thing today. And, and I will say this, and I'm going to qualify this, that I listed the street department as my number one item. There's a caveat to that. And that's, the caveat is understanding some of those other needs, okay, that are going to come here. We have, when, when we built our event center and we leased that, we have a responsibility as the landlord to, to do certain things. And one of the things that was placed on that priority list that we had, which is undefined, which is one of my questions, was updating and improvements at, I don't know what that quantifies. I don't know what that, what that actually means, other than I can envision some of that, but I don't know. I don't know what those things are, I don't know what those dollars are. I don't know, are some of them a want or are some of them a need? So I don't know that one. The next one is, we're right in the middle of a FEMA flood study. And that flood study is going to come with, at the end, if it's accepted in part or in whole, is going to come from some type of funding from the city of Watertown. So I don't know where we're at with that. So if, if I looked at those two items alone, I need to understand what our possible obligation is there before I commit 15 million because I see those two things as, I don't think we got a lot of choice. We have some money, don't know what that is that we have to spend at the event center. Don't know, is it, is it 100 grand, is it a million? I don't know that. In the flood study, we know that that's significant dollars. If we were to accept that study and our, the plans in it and the costs, that's millions of dollars to us. Where's that going to come from if it's acceptable to us? That, that's where I'm coming from of, I got to understand the list and some of those priorities and some of those questions of what if, what if? You know, the fact that, you know, Councilman Jerrance said that, that some of them get moved out, yeah, it becomes a timing issue as to when. They still become a need or a want or whatever they are, but they just get kicked down the road a ways, right? And that happens. These are items that we really don't have much opportunity or much option to kick down the road. That's what's concerning to me, so that you know that. And that's where it's very important for me to understand that list and the questions that we have. And I would hope, and Mr. Vannan, I think you're right, I don't want this thing to go on any longer than it has to. That's why I'm saying, let's accelerate this process and get, get it discussed, understood so that staff knows where they're going, we know what's going on, so.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Danforth on this priority. I know we're working on the priority list for the council. And to add on to the couple of ideas he mentioned, you know, then there's also the east fire station, well, or let's say ambulance service potentially even at first, that personally for me is, is right up in there for a priority. And so again, when you look at these numbers, the CIP funding, the 4.7 million, you know, I, I guess for me personally, I need a discussion to be had on, what does this, what does this really do? Where does this put our numbers out as far as, does that put it out 10 years? Does it put it out five years? We get into the flood study, we're working on that. And so this, these are conversations that, yeah, we do need to have a, I, personally, I believe we just got to really have all these factors factored in, not just this project by itself, but, but discuss where are we going? And that's why we're doing the council priority list, that's why we're working on that. So yeah, the sooner we work on that, we can't really move forward, I believe, until we really have that discussion personally.
Can I add something?
City Manager Mac?
Thank you. All really valid conversation. From a, an operational perspective, here's where it becomes challenging to have all of the details. So in Eastside Fire Station, we haven't scoped it, we haven't selected a site, we haven't determined if it's a fire, a full-fledged fire station or if it's an ambulance service. We don't know any of that to share with you, which is why for us, the value in knowing what your priorities are, one, helps us figure out where to spend our time in researching, in vetting. And it may come back, and I'm, for everybody who's listening, these are not real numbers, okay? After all of this research, it may come back that, you know, the, the fire station is 15 million and a clubhouse is 3 million and flood protection is 30 million. And then, once we, so here are our top five things. All right, we've gone and done all the homework, here are true cost estimates. Then you can reprioritize them based on the details that you have. But right now, with a list of 20 or 30 or 40 items, we simply don't know where you want us to be spending our time. And that's what makes it really difficult to say you should prioritize this over that because in, in the, in the big picture, high level, like we don't even know where you're at conceptually with, with some of these things. And that's just maybe one of the sins of the past of sort of using the CIP as more of a wish list and we just throw things on it. And when we get to that year, we decide if we've got the dollars to do it or not. And so we're trying to transition into more of a, you know, long-term thing. Now, we know that debt starts dropping off in, in 2029, is that right, Kristin? You know, if you issue the $3 million bond, it bumps it down to 2031. But you also then have opportunities for additional bonding if you choose to do that. There's the other revenue sources that we talked about. So there are opportunities to bring your, you know, your priority project fund into larger balances if you so choose. But, but those are the, the, the direction, the, the things that we need from you all to know where we're spending our time. It's one thing to call the city of Brookings and say, how much did it cost you to build your last fire station? And maybe that's all that you need in order to have the discussion, but there's a lot of nuances, right, between Brookings and Watertown. They have four full-time firefighters, they own the ambulance service, but the hospital runs it. Like they're, they're not comparable in, in terms of how we actually operate. So we will accelerate, we'll have the meeting whenever it works for all of you. But what we would need going into that meeting is what information do you want? And do you need in order to help you guys make that, make that list? And do you need in order to help you guys make that, make that list? There's a lot of words, sorry.
Follow up, Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. So another question on this subject, then historically, as the dust settles after COVID, what's the average increase of projects, let's say, from year to year? Is it like 3% or 4% in cost? You know, there's been some, the last couple of years have been challenging, but what's the average?
Yeah, that just before COVID?
Since, since things have plateaued. Yeah, I would guess it's probably pushing more for, just a rough guess.
Okay.
As things have plateaued since COVID.
And as, just doing the math on that, on a $15 million project, I did 3%, it was like 450,000. Is it, if it, if let's say it's $500,000 more to build a year, wait a year, is there value in that $500,000 extra expense in making sure we have, like City Manager Mack had mentioned here, we really need to work out as a staff and as a team, as a council, on what these priorities are? Do we really get that done in the next two weeks? So we've pushed ourselves into a $15 million project, when is there value in, if there really is a bigger picture we're talking about, can we figure that out in the next two weeks? Or should we, you know, just consider this process to really make sure we're being good stewards of the, of the vision as we dial this in for the next even six months, let's say? Just some thoughts on the subject.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, respond to that. Thank you, Councilman Shuddy. From a staff's perspective, you know, these types of decisions are indeed the councils to make, which projects to move forward with, which projects to fund with the city taxpayer dollars that we collect. For these special projects, you know, like the ICE Arena, like the Wellness Center, Airport Terminal, they truly are a one-off project in how we've now designed the capital improvement fund to treat them that way, not to plug them in with the annual routine street maintenance, fire truck purchases and all that stuff, but to pull them out and truly treat them separately. What I wanted to offer up, that it truly isn't uncommon for communities like Watertown to pick one of these and run with it and get it done. And then if it takes a year, or two, or five to get to the next item on the list, that's what they do. And then they know that's what's coming next, and they know what their surplus dollars are going towards to build that kitty up again, to be able to get that next project done. So in my mind, it really is going to be, you know, with the $3 million invested, with where we're at, this close to getting to the finish line, is this something we truly want to get done for this investment? Because we can otherwise, what if, and interject all the other two dozen special projects on that list, use a clubhouse, for example, and say, no, we want a clubhouse instead. Well, there goes the 4.7 million. And then now, we've ruffled this project to the point where it's not going to be attainable for a good two, three, five, six years before we get that 4.7 back to plug into this one. So it really does become a hard-fought challenge for you all as a council to decide, yes, this is the goal, this is what we're doing, we got to get this one done, and then we'll look at the next. Forever that's worth, from a special project standpoint, I just wanted to add those comments.
Any follow up again, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate that, because this is a project, as you had stated earlier in your presentation, that goes back quite a few years. And before I got on the council, three years ago, there was already the bond already purchased with this in mind. So I, there is, then you got to look at that, as you're saying, this has already been a council priority with taking a bond out for a street department. So it's, so I understand that it's, it's at the point where we almost have to get it off the list. It's just, you know, because of how far we've came with it, but it's just, I still, we need to have a good conversation on where we're going. And it's sad if this kind of pushes back some of this, like whatever number two project is a number three, if it pushes it back five years, you know, it's just, I guess that's the nature of the beast. But however, I just want to, just make sure we're all communicating correctly on this.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we look at these, I think it's important, moving forward, as all of us prioritize the different projects that we discussed and that we have on the list to prioritize, you know, we need to look at the end result. What's the return on investment? How does it apply to safety? How does it apply to revenue for the city? But, you know, like I think Heath, you had alluded to this, that this will tell us too, what we can do, is say we pick five projects, what we can do this year, what we can do concurrently, because we're not talking about having all those projects done in the same year. We can then put that out, as we've always done, when we budgeted, we move those projects out as to the priority. But, you know, that's why we get the big bucks, right? We got to make the decision on what of these projects are priority and how they stand. But I think you got to look at that return on investment carefully when you do that. And the longer we wait, I think, especially something like this, this capital project, it's not going to save us money, it's just absolutely going to cost us more money. You know, not to mention what we do for all the equipment that sits idly, or the safety issues we have with warming these things up at the current facility, you know? But I, what City Manager Mack said, I agree with 100%. We just, we need to, I think if we make these priorities, say whittle it down to three, four, five, whatever the case may be, then they have direction as to what they need to start looking for information on, where we need to get detail so we can examine that detail to help us set those priorities. Instead of, you know, we're going to have 10, 15 projects, and they got to use all the resources that you folks have to try to find out, you know, how much that's going to cost, how, what the magnitude of that project's going to be, all those kind of things. So as far as time goes, I think that saves a lot of time, too. So we can get to the details and decide what we're going to do and when we're going to do it.
Councilman Tupper.
All due respect for all my comrades here. We sit and we look at these projects, you know, and I don't know how many council meetings we've had and how many work sessions we've had talking about the street department. We're going to set priorities as a council priority here shortly. And in July next year, that could change, because you could have three new council people, maybe not. So those priorities are always going to change, but how long do you just keep kicking the can down the road? I look at the East Fire Station, it was first put on a CIP in 2013. We're not a step closer to where we were in 2013, not one step. So until we can work together and direct our staff with these priorities, we're not going to accomplish a whole lot. We really haven't gave them a whole lot to work with here lately, but the funding proposal on this, I think, is right on. I would feel more comfortable, just as Councilman Danforth said, after we get through those other priorities, but those priorities are going to change every election day, so they're not locked in stone, neither is the CIP. But if a CIP was, we'd, Don wouldn't be sitting back there still waiting on that one, Rob wouldn't be sitting here waiting for a new street facility, so.
Any further comments or commentary? Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, Mayor, I promise on this issue, well, I will promise, because I might have another question or comment anyway, but yeah, no, it's possible. Sparky. And Randy, you mentioned that, Councilman, that, you know, and others have, that what I'm hoping is going to come out of our prioritization meeting is a direction for staff. It's all over the board right now. And I think if we list the top five and we have a lot of discussion and we come up with something, you're right, it's always, it's always subject to change. Sometimes we just got to do some swag estimating on costs, just to, at least it gets you somewhere on the paper, right? As far as, and it might not be right, probably not right, but you still have to establish some reasonable number that, is it four? Maybe it's five or six, maybe it's three, but at least you're, you know, you're somewhere in the ballpark. What's important to me is, if we said, yep, Mr. Vannay, go tonight, we put a stake in the ground, that $15 million is gone. It's gone, because now we have committed that to this project. And I'm saying, it's, if I know that these other things can work out and that we can cover them in some manner or when, the what ifs, and the what ifs to me are the two items that I mentioned, then, okay, then I'm cool with that. But until I understand those things, it's hard for me to say bang, because once we say go on the 15 million, these gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, whoever's working on this, they're moving full force forward. And it's hard to pull that reins back. So I'm just saying, for my sake, let's get through this process, let's speed up the process so that we know that we have something, that we understand the ramifications of our decisions, so that we can make good decisions as best we can, best we can.
City Manager Mack.
Does December 4th work, the afternoon of December 4th?
Not for me.
The 3rd doesn't work for Councilman Peters. That whole week won't work for you?
Probably not.
Well, then that puts us at the 9th, which is the regularly scheduled work session. I'll await direction from all of you on when you want to have the meeting. City Hall is closed the 28th and 29th. And like I said, there are several people, including some on the council, who are out for Thanksgiving week. I mean, we could do something Friday, this coming Friday, the 22nd?
That's actually a possibility.
May I ask a question of all of us on this side? How much time do we think this is going to take to have a good, meaningful discussion? Because there's going to come questions out of this that have to get probably looked at by staff and come back. You know, could this, could this be bantered through and considered in two meetings? Couple hours each and say, okay, here we are?
We've been on this for an hour and a half already, so who knows?
Can I respond?
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm not sure this is a good answer to what your question is, Mike, but, you know, we've looked at this thing, I was back in my 30s, I think, you know? We've looked at every, this thing upside down and, you know, the one, the variables that I'm concerned about, I think one of our priorities, I'm going to gamble this, but I think one of them's going to have to be that flood issue. I think that's going to be one. So there's a few of them that I think, once the priorities come out, that we're going to need, but I think some of this, we, I think we're pretty much up to speed, but some of the cost issues for some of the other projects, say it's down, we whittle it down to three or four, I think we could, like you say, some of the swag, you said it yourself, we can kind of figure out what the ballpark is to get some of that stuff.
We're okay with swag numbers. We can pull this together relatively easily.
Councilman Tupper.
The only thing is, is we can sit here and talk all night until we give staff identify those, however long it takes us, if it's two, two-hour meetings or two, four-hour meetings, that priority list doesn't mean anything till we can give it to them, so they can start working on, how are we going to fund this? Do we want to put it in year six and fund this? Or do we want to put it in year three and fund this?
Actually, just a point of clarity on that. So the way that we are transforming the CIP is that these projects don't actually go into the long-term plan. They, that council priority fund is how you pay for them, which is separate from year three, year six. So these projects aren't competing with the fire trucks and the police cars and the motor graders and the road projects. So it is a little bit different than how we've done it up until this point.
Mayor.
Director Vannay. To Councilman Danforth, and then recently with Councilman Tupper's point, and maybe Beeler made it too, but the, so some of these other expenditures that we know are looming because they're an active project, like the flood study, for example, with the Corps of Engineers, that is some good information, I can see why you all would want that, that we can bring to that work session. I believe it's 9 million bucks that we're roughly estimated to be on the hook for, but some of the unknowns there, can we get another 50-50 grant with the state to help pay the local share like we've been doing with the study costs? That would put our share at then four and a half. Those monies, too, another point to make regarding that one in particular, would be, you know, the expense for that wouldn't be incurred until 2030 or sometime thereafter. So the timing, the dollar amount, all that, I can see why it'd be good, valuable information for you to have, and we can bring what we have to that meeting. We know generally a cost per square foot of some of these buildings, I bet we could get a swag on a country, or a clubhouse, cost per square foot, and assess that to what we think the size of that building might need to be. Same thing for an East Side Fire Station slash ambulance shop. I do think we could get some rough ideas. The biggest component to me, in my mind, that the council will want to consider is, and I think Councilman Danforth mentioned this, the rate of accrual of those revenues before you can now check off project number two, and the rate of accrual of the revenues before you can get to project number three. And I think this, our CFO, Bob Zine, would agree that that might be the biggest challenge that you all face, is waiting for those revenues to compile before you can get to the next project. Without some of the alternative source of revenue that we mentioned at the last meeting, really, the generator of that additional, filling that bucket back up, is going to be any excess sales tax revenues over and above what was projected. Otherwise, it's kind of a stalemate for those years to come. I don't want to be Debbie Downer on that message, but that is a true factor, a true realization that our needs are simply exceeding, if we consider any of these special project needs, these needs are simply exceeding the revenues that we've got right now. And then, and frankly, that really haven't been explored or looked at modifying for quite some time. And so food for thought there. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of suggestions on how to maybe move this discussion forward to the next phase. First, if Friday, the 22nd, does work for all of you, I do have some staff out, but we can do the research and get what we need, we could schedule it for Friday. Another suggestion that I have is, I would suggest that all of you fill out the survey that was sent, and not because that's how the priority list is going to be determined, but so we can see collectively, we're all, the items that all seven of you think are priority in some way, shape, or form, so we can gather some data on them, right? So some of you may think it's, you know, your five may include the clubhouse, it may include downtown flowers, it may include ball fields, it'll be a whole wide gamut, so we can do the best that we can in the next two days, two, three days, to just get some swag numbers on everything that you all might think is a priority. And then you guys can go through and actually prioritize based off of the information that we're able to provide. Does that sound fair?
Was that reset?
Okay.
We'll resend it if we.
I'd like to say something, I'll call it the ballot, the council priority project ballot. I just want to say something for everyone that, I'll first start and say, you know, as Mayor, I try to be a very, I try to have a very positive mindset. I find that easy to do with a community that I love, that I think is great. But also, I force myself to think positively as well, because sometimes I can be frustrated. I know we've had this discussion about wanting a council priority project list a long time ago. It has taken us a long time to get here, but I want to just point out to everyone, Watertown has never had this before. This is the first time ever where we have taken every single idea we could ever come up with, listed them, and then we're going to ask council to actually vote on them, to prioritize them. That is one of the reasons why we've had so many problems in the past with projects never getting done, because everyone would throw something on a list, we like limited it to 10, and those would linger for like 15, 20 years. And then something else would just come up, and the public would want that. And then all of a sudden, that takes the priority, and it usurps everything else that has been on the list for a long time. So I want to contend that this is actually better than Watertown has ever done it before. Now, it might be frustrating, but it is, it is better than it has ever done before. Now, regarding the ballot, it has not even been a week since we've had that meeting. And I'm sure that all of you are aware that some pretty big news broke last week, too, that at least for City Manager Mack and myself, has preoccupied a lot of our time figuring out what's going to happen next. So we did talk about having a ballot, and we were talking about prioritize, how to weight it. So the idea was, I had the So the idea was, I had the, Councilman Danforth had the same thought as I did, independently of each other. So we would rank them one through five. Your first choice gets like five points, second point four, or second place, four points, whatever, so that you have a weighted ballot regarding the priority, the true priority of the council. Our IT Director, Peter Boyle, came up with a wonderful ballot. He sent it out last Friday. I just have simply not had time to process that and get it out to the council. I will take full responsibility for that. But with that said, I can send that out tonight, and if everyone wants to vote on it before the end of business tomorrow, and did everyone get that? Before the end of business tomorrow? Councilman Danforth did get his ballot in. So.
After hours.
Yeah. So if we can, if we can get that in, then we at least can start the process, and then we can have the discussion based upon what the winnowed down list was. So I actually do think that, as painful as this may be, it has been, we are in a better position than what we have been, and we will be that much closer to making a decision. In regard to the time, how long it takes, I guess I have a different attitude. My job, I think, as Mayor, is to facilitate the discussion. I don't know, and sometimes I'm egregiously wrong in estimating how long. I would have guessed this discussion would have taken a half an hour tonight. And obviously, I am way wrong, but if it's an important, if it's important to the council, I'm not going to cut off discussion. As long as you guys want to be heard and want to come up with information, that is our job. And I know that that also can be painful, but that is what we signed up for when we put our names on the ballot. And I want to thank the staff for sitting through it as well. So I think, look, government is not easy, but we signed up for it, and we're doing better than what we have. So let's focus on the positive, and we'll get the ballot out. Everyone will vote by the end of business tomorrow, and then maybe on Friday?
I mean, if it works for everyone, Councilman Peters said he'd have to call in, but we could plan to start at noon and have lunch and work through it until we're done.
Sure. All right. We will move on now. No, I'm going to, just a second. Item 9A is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Maria Rodriguez, doing business as Teccheria La Mexicana. We'll go to our finance officer. I know I butchered that.
I'm not even going to try.
Finance Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. This is actually in the old UPS store. It did pass the Board of Adjustments as far as the location, because it would be the first time in that specific location. Notice has been published, and all fees have been paid. If there's any questions, I can help. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, go to council action. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Shuddy. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11B is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota wine, farm wine license to the Village of Harmony Hill Incorporated, doing business as the Commons of Harmony Hill. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With your permission, I'm going to cover B and C, they're both for.
Yes, please.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, so in front of the council is a new retail malt beverage, and then also a wine and cider. I did want to point out that the wine and cider license is not going to go into effect until January 1st of 2025. That's just because of the renewal process, but they wanted to take action. We did verify that with the state of South Dakota, and all that is fine, that we take action now, but not effective until January. As far as this one, this was approved, as far as the location, by Community Development. It's allowable use in the PUD. Again, all fees have been paid and notices are published. If there's any questions, I can help. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing, and I'm going to allow the, the ease of conversation to talk about both 11B and 11C, since they are both at the same location, and the license is only slightly different. And I believe we have someone to testify.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Jerns, on behalf of the Commons at the Village of Harmony Hill. For those of you that are unaware, the Commons is the former monastery building. And so just as Christine has kind of called out, it is for our second-floor event space that is specifically then called out for our community room, Prairie Vista Dining Room, boardroom on the hill, as well as Benny's Lounge, just so that our PUD doesn't, you know, conflict with any of our resident apartments, so that it doesn't affect them at all. So yes, so we will take effect immediately, if possible, on just the malt beverage and the South Dakota farm wines. And then due to that licensing renewal, we'll go January 1st with our other wines, as well as the cider. So thank you all for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll gladly hear them.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the malt beverage and farm wine? So a motion made by Councilman Beeler? Second by Councilman Tupper. Open it up for questions or comments.
I do have a quick question.
Councilman Tupper?
That's not going to be anyplace near the daycare, correct?
Nope, not at all. Daycare is on the south, yeah, the south side of our property, in the former HHH or the St. Anne's Hall, and so it is completely across the parking lot from Bennett Place through Legacy Circle, down to our parking lot at the front of the Commons. So no, there's quite a distance between us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to say, as always, it's very exciting, everything that's going on out there. It's hard for us not intimately involved on a daily basis with the project to keep track of everything that's going on, so.
Thank you. If you haven't been out there, I mean, if I may, sorry, Mayor. If you haven't had a chance to be out there and see it, our next public thing is going to be on Small Business Saturday, which is November 30th. We are going to have a youth business fair, so it's all for our young entrepreneurs. If you think of an adult craft fair or vendor fair, but this is all children, ran-operated, made businesses. So whether they have a service, or they make crafts, or sew and crochet, it is just kids that operate businesses, so come on out and support those youths, and then you can tour the building and kind of see where we're at.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comments? As none of the questions were, as none of the comments were negative in order, I feel confident in just going to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11C is an application for a new retail wine and cider license for the Village of Harmony Hill, doing business as the Commons of Harmony Hill. Officer Bob Zine, anything new? Mrs. Jerns?
Nope, falls along the lines, same lines.
Open a public hearing, close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Shuddy. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 11D is a package liquor license renewal for Four Amigos LLC Cowboy Country Stores Number Two at 504 Ninth Avenue Southeast, and all vacated lots at 12 to 15, line east of the highway, Lot 16, and vacated alley, Block Four of Davlins Edition. I wanted to state the geographical location, as I think that's what's important here. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda was a long list of renewals. This one was pulled off, it was a violation. The violation did take place in 2023, it was underage sale. They did appear before the council in May, so we kind of had that thing where you appear once and not, so as far as this, they've already spoken on the violation, and all fees have been paid, again, notice published, so any questions, I can help.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the renewal? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to renew the license. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11E is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Walgreens, or Walgreen Company, doing business as Walgreens. And we'll go to Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With your permission again, I'll cover E and F, as they're both for Walgreens. This one is new, it is before you, and it was approved by the Community Development Department. It's a C3, so it's a conditional use for off-sale. So if at any time it went on sale, it would come back through a whole nother process. Again, all fees have been paid, notice is published, everything's in order on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will open a public hearing for both E and F. Is there anyone who would like to testify? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for action. Can I get a motion to approve the application for the bev, farm wine and malt beverage? Or? Yeah, no, E and F are Walgreens, G is something different. So E, but we're just doing E right now, so application for. Yep. So can I get a motion? Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Jerns. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, vote. All those in favor of approving the application for the malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Walgreens, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item F is an application for a new retail wine and cider license to Walgreens. Officer Bob Zine, anything different? Any public testimony? Close public testimony, open it up for action. Can I get a motion? Motion made by Councilman Beeler? Need a second? Seconded by Councilman Jerns. Any questions or comments? Close that, let's go to a vote. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item G is an application for a transfer of location of a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from the city of Watertown, doing business as the Prairie Lakes Ice Arena, to the city of Watertown, doing business as the, doing business as Prairie Lakes Ice Arena, but the location is different. This new one will be at 3015 First Avenue Northeast, the west 270th, 270 feet, 12 inches of the east, 310 feet, 12 inches of the south, 322 feet, 21 inches of the north, 377 feet, 79 inches of Lot 2A, Block 3 of Lake Willow Creek First Edition, and the authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to issue a special check in the amount of $75 to the South Dakota Department of Revenue for the transfer fee. I wanted to cite the geographical location, because again, I think that's what this one is mainly about. City Manager Mack, did you want to take it?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is obviously related to the ice arena. What this action would do is remove the parking lot from the alcohol footprint. Also, item H is the same thing, it's just a different license. In conversations with the Shamrocks, as you all are aware, we have been facilitating tailgating in the parking lot, because the license covers the entire parking lot. What this would do would allow for tailgating to be facilitated on its own, if you will, by patrons. In speaking with the Shamrocks, we would want to shift the, the rules, if you will, of tailgating from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, so start tailgating at 5:00 PM, 5:00 to 6:30, and once 6:30 rolls around, there is no more consumption of alcohol in the parking lot. No bringing of beverages into the facility during or after tailgating. That was super weird. So that's, that's what this action is. Tailgating's been going well. The last time we did it, the city ended up losing money on it by staffing it, and there's also a desire to just maybe have a little more flexibility. That's the gist of it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm going to allow everyone to talk or publicly testify on both items G and H, because they are, again, essentially the same thing. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I heard someone online, so I'm just going to take a little pause in case anyone there wanted to say something.
Mayor, I believe that's a blip every time I log into Teams. I need to go in and quick mute the mic. It doesn't do it for me before I enter the meeting, so I apologize for that.
All right, thank you. Any public testimony? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for questions. Councilman Danforth?
Just a, well, probably more of a comment than a question for City Manager Mack, but we're only taking action on the parameters or the boundary of where the licenses.
Correct.
Not the policies for administration of any.
Correct.
Okay. That's important for the public to know. That's a administrative role to set those parameters. We're just allowing that to occur without them having to buy the, the alcohol from the city of Watertown.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Motion is to approve the application and authorize the check. Officer Bob, if you're in favor of that, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item H is an application for a transfer of a location of a retail wine and cider license from the ice arena to the ice arena. City Manager Mack, anything new on this one?
No additional.
Open a public hearing, anyone? Close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve this? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any questions, comments? All right. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item I is a second reading of the 2025 budget appropriation, number one of which is an ordinance number 24-25 for the 2025 city budget appropriation, and number two is a 2025 enterprise funds budget. We will allow conversation on both. City Manager Mack, did you want to lead this?
Thank you, Mayor. We've not amended or changed anything since the presentation or the first, first hearing. I'll stand by for any questions you might have related to what has been presented over the last month.
Officer Bob Zine, did you want to add anything? Okay. I will allow conversation on both, but I want, can this be taken as both? Okay, then I'll do both at the same time. So I need a motion to approve the ordinance budget on both the appropriation and the enterprise funds. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Open it up for questions or comments, council. City Manager Mack, I did want to ask one thing. I know that there was a conversation between the two of us regarding some secondary funding. I don't want to name anything in particular, but there was the, you and I had just been conversing about the possibility of having some flexibility regarding that, that this is the appropriation that gets us to where we can spend money.
Yes.
But it doesn't absolutely have to lock us down when it comes to secondary organizations.
Correct. So the way we have approached it this year is we have included the total requested dollars in the budget, so that there is authority to give those dollars if you so choose, but putting those dollars in the budget does not guarantee funding to those who have requested it.
Yes, and I just wanted to.
It allows you, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. It allows you to do that if you so choose.
And I just wanted to make a point of that, because this could potentially be important very soon, based upon conversations we might have, because we fund a lot of secondary, we fund a lot of organizations and entities in the community, and based upon some of the requests for appropriations from them, or lack thereof, I just wanted to say that what City Manager Mack put in the budget was what they requested from us. Now, that still gives us the opportunity that if we didn't get a request from an organization or a request for less money, we could potentially spend less or change where we want to send it. So just want to point it out, it might not, might not mean anything, we might not do any of that, but there is that possibility. So just wanted to point that out. And I don't want to point out any one entity in particular, because I, there have been no plans to cut or eliminate, but there is that possibility, so. Any further comments? All right. All those in favor of the budget will say aye. Opposed, say nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12A is an approval of resolution number 24-27 establishing fees for city licenses, permits, administration, memberships, user fees, and other miscellaneous items. Officer Bobzine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is the time that the council reviews the fees that are established to start at the beginning of the year. So these will go into effect January 2025. I know last year it was requested that we show what the changes were. So included in the council agenda was an informational, so you can see what each fee was and then what the change is that's proposed, and then a final draft of that. There was quite a bit of change throughout all the departments, so if there's any specific questions, I can help. Hang on, we did have one kind of question here. There's one wrong on this resolution. The landfill tipping fee does need to go up to 60, and that's also spelled out in a separate resolution. But I'll be making that adjustment, so. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Let's open it up for questions and comments. City Assistant City Manager Vonai?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one diagram that was inadvertently left out of the packet, if I could quick pull it up just so it's on the record. It relates to our building permit fees. Community Development Manager Hanton is with us here tonight. If you have any detailed questions on it, let me click the right buttons here to get it shared. All right. So these were intended to be attached to the fee resolution, but it really is, it's evaluation-based building permit fee structure that we have. As you can see, this spreadsheet is very extensive. It goes through all the different thresholds, evaluations that trigger the associated building permit fee. And Ms. Hanton, Manager Hanton, has been able to update these in accordance with the needs and also in line with where these fees would appropriately be set for our community. This is done so with comparison, of course, to other communities, where they're trending at with their building permit fees. With that, I'd stand by with Manager Hanton for any questions or any detail you'd like to know about these.
Thank you. We already have a motion, we're still open for council deliberation. Any questions or comments? Hey, do you think wrong, Officer Bobzine? It was Councilmen Shuddy and Beeler. Councilman Danforth, did you have something?
No.
Okay. All right, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns? Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a resolution amending the rate schedule for the wastewater utility services for the city of Watertown and setting an effective date of February 1st, 2025. CFO, Bobzine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is the wastewater rate schedule. You'll notice that this one is by resolution and it breaks it down based off of the base rate. And then it does spell out each of our SRF loans, and that's that debt required coverage that we kind of have to have. So we do work with AE2S to come up with these rates that will cover not only the operating, but then the debt, and then set some of our reserves aside for future capital as well. So if there's any questions on this, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Tupper. Councilman, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12C is an approval of a resolution amending the solid waste rate schedule. CFO, Bobzine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this will set the rates for the solid waste. Again, we did work with AE2S to set those to cover not only the operating, but then any, there's really not a lot of debt here, but we do set aside some funds for capital. So I think everything's in order. I did want to point out that these will be January readings effective February 1st for both the wastewater and the solid waste. So that's kind of our standard. We did talk to utilities and they prefer that because they change their rates also effective January billing for February. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any questions or comments? Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the previous item, item 12B, and then this one, are, we're doing an increase or if this passes, we're doing a potential increase on the base of our utility bill of about 15% is what I calculated. However, on this, which I get it on the wastewater side of it, on the solid waste, it's about a 30%, a little over a 30% increase. So I was just curious what that, so this is another four and a half dollars on top of what we just did on the six. So it's, you know, 10 bucks a month on the base rate for every citizen. Sounds like pocket change, but still, the 30% increase, I was just curious, what dollar, what dollar amount is that? What is that revenue, how much revenue does that bring in if we raise it 30% versus 20% or 10%? I was just curious.
I do not have that specific number.
Okay.
I can get it for you. I will say that I think one, one trigger for the increase has been we've stayed pretty stagnant at the landfill over the past. So those cash reserves were pretty depleted. What this is doing is it's not only covering the current operating, but it is helping to kind of build that reserve back up for some of those larger purchases. And then, you know, we do try to buy land and kind of cover those cells whenever we have to revamp those. So I think that's part of it is we're kind of almost trying to get ourselves a little bit right for some of the past years.
Follow-up. I appreciate that because, you know, I was out there on a, when was it last? Last week, whatever day it was as the council, some of us were out there. And there is some good improvements we're doing as a city in the, in the landfill. And so I do appreciate the work they're all doing out there. So I can, I can see the, the value of that. I just was, just curious how it came about a 30% increase. But then as I, you know, look at my three years on here, I haven't seen an increase in the three years I've been here. So I do, I can see why there hasn't been much of an increase, but just wanted to properly vet that one out, so thanks.
Mr. Mayor? Director Vonai?
To Councilman Shuddy's concern and valid point there, I just wanted to offer up, even with these increases, both wastewater and solid waste, we're still in the bottom third of wastewater utility rates and solid waste collection rates within the whole region. AE2S, that Chris incited a little bit ago, engineering consulting firm, they do an annual utility rate study. It's a very useful document, and they give all the contributors to that information a copy of it. And it shows cities in Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, I believe maybe even into Iowa, but this whole region in comparison to how their rates are. And in both of those realms, we're still in the bottom third. So just wanted to share that information.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? The motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay. CFO, Bobzine?
Okay. Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12D is, I have just done a special checks, I'm going to have to find out exactly what that is. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. This is requesting authorization for the CFO to issue special checks as it relates to the agreement with the Shamrocks so that we can pay invoices to them and to vendors more frequently than our monthly schedule, our monthly typical bill pay schedule.
All right. Can I get, so we'll just say authorize the issuance of checks?
I think if you say authorization for me to issue the checks as they relate to the agreement for the profit sharing, that's really what it is. It's not for anything related to purchasing or anything like that. It's the concession profit sharing kind of breakdown.
The motion will be to authorize the city financial officer to issue checks in regard to the cost sharing with the Shamrocks.
Perfect.
Based upon the terms of the agreement.
Yep.
So it would be ongoing until the agreement changes.
Okay, based upon the ongoing terms of the agreement. All right, that's going to be the official motion. Can I get someone to make that? Made by Councilman Shuddy?
Sure.
Seconded by Councilman Jerns. You're on the board, Councilman, nice. Open it up for questions or comments. Any questions or comments on this? All right. Hearing none, we'll go into, actually, just, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're now on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Does anyone have anything? I would like to start off, I'm going to make this regular at every public microphone that I have before, between now and Christmas. Get out and shop local, support your local stores, they support this entire community. It's extremely important. I know that it might be easier to sit on your computer and order at night and have it arrive sometime in the next day or two, but those are not the people that are going to fund your kids' Little League teams or the special events in this community. So please understand that when you're buying local, you're not just buying a present for a loved one, you're actually making a, you're buying a present for the shop owners that are putting their livelihoods on the risk. So please step up and do what's right for the community. I am also going to make a special announcement. In lieu of last week's announcement of City Manager Mac's resignation to pursue a wonderful opportunity in the city of Harrisburg, the city of Watertown is finding itself in a first-ever situation where we need to find a process for finding a new city manager. So I am going to appoint a committee for, I'm going to call it the Succession Plan Committee. Now, we already have things in ordinance and the Home Rule Charter that we will follow, but this is going to be just some councilmen who are going to be doing a little bit of extra work in the short term to basically vet out, we're going to probably look at a recruiting company, someone to maybe go out and find applicants from a wider area than what might just make the local news. No offense to the local news here, but just doing the same thing that we did the first time. This does not mean that someone local isn't going to get the job. It does not mean that someone, some, from far away is automatically going to get the job. It just means that we owe it to Watertown to open it up, to get the best possible crop of candidates, and then the city council will make it from there. But there are just some things that we need to figure out as a council, and these are probably things that don't need to have the entire council to do it. So things like looking at the recruiting, you know, vetting some recruiting companies, figuring out a timetable. My, how I envision this is this is going to be extremely fast committee. I'm going to, whoever I task, I'm going to want news back by, I'll say, the first meeting in December as far as the procedure that we're going to go by. And this is to fill the position permanently. This is just the procedure that we're going to go on. Doesn't mean that we're filling it, it's just there's some things that we have to figure out, and I want to make sure that we as a council are doing it right because that is our responsibility to deal with the city manager position. So I am going to be making those appointments later. I'll get that out to the news and, but I wanted council to have the opportunity to volunteer, make their case, and we'll have a discussion on that, but that will get out later. That is going to be a committee that I'm going to form. Is there any other announcements? City Manager, report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just sent to all of you the link to vote, so please do that expeditiously. We will schedule the work session for Friday at noon in the Public Works Conference Room. Friday? Does that work for you? Helping or hurting, Councilman Beeler? Helping or hurting?
Should be fine.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. We do have reasons to go into executive session for personnel and contractual reasons. I will take a motion to go in, we will not be taking any action when we get out. Can I get a motion to go into executive? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll just say good night and God bless you, Watertown, right now, as we won't be doing any action at the adjournment. We're going to take five, and everyone come back with-